Mayor of the Law Labor License Committee of Fort Thomas. I call this special meeting of the Law Labor License Committee of Fort Thomas to order. It's nine AM, February fifteenth, two thousand twenty-four. The items on the agenda today are a discussion of increasing the Duke Energy franchise fee to fund future street replacements and discussion on repealing the street assessment program within the city of Fort Thomas. Matt, would you care to just give a rundown of what the franchise fee is?
Yes.
Where it is?
Yeah, so we talked about this to start at the Public Works Committee meeting when we were doing, we were approving this next year's street program. And with the street assessments that we do, we're the only city in Kentucky that still has it, and we, I know this is not a new discussion. We've discussed this for a while from what I've heard before us, but we started discussing, moving forward, the things that we could do in order to not have to do the street assessments because it's a challenge for staff, it's a challenge for citizens to get those bills, you know, out of the blue sometimes, and just to kind of streamline the process. In addition, we are making changes to the street program this year to having more of the work contracted out to allow our public works to do more of the purification of the city and just more, more city, more public works projects that doesn't pull it away as much. And we've done that over the years to save money, and it's, it's obviously been effective, but it, it's at the cost of other things being not, not maintained as well. So we're giving that a try this year. We're going to see how that, how that functions. And just from talking to staff, I think that's going to be a, a big plus moving forward for everybody. But again, just like a lot of things, changes I've made this year is just going to be a twelve-month test. If it doesn't work, we can always go back. But I think that's going to be a good, a good thing for this year. The street program's already built like that to limit any kind of public works, actual work on it and contracting more. Along with that, it does cost more money in order for us to do that. So it is going to, it's going to cost more money for the city to be able to do, to contract more without. So one of the things that a lot of cities use, and it's, it's a good situation for us, is to increase the Duke Energy franchise fee in order to cover the costs that normally would be billed to the citizens directly. Currently, our franchise fee is at seventy-one, it's a flat rate. And I think we're the only ones in Northern Kentucky, maybe anywhere, that has a flat rate. So my house, I pay seventy-one cents. St. Elizabeth's pays seventy-one cents, right? So.
And that's basically just because the initial agreement was for thirty-eight thousand four hundred. So that seventy-one cents is then just divided by how many bills are, and how do they get to seventy-one cents?
No, that, I mean, it has to be a percentage for the most part in our franchise agreement. So it's like point zero two percent, but it's a flat rate too. So you have, they had to put like an estimate what that is.
Oh.
And that brings in about fifty thousand a year that just goes to the general fund. So there's really nothing, and from my, from my knowledge, nine years ago when we entered into the franchise agreement, there was nothing that that was dedicated to. It was just revenue. The franchise agreement is also not just a revenue source, it also puts limitations on what Duke can do in our right of ways. So there's a, a lot of people view it just as a tax pool, but really the most important thing, and I have a lot of experience with dealing with Duke and them doing things in their right of ways, not, you know, in other cities too, that are, that aren't controlled, where they kind of just do what they want. So it's a, it's a great, the franchise is great in that aspect, that we can really limit what they can do in our right of ways, that they have to permit, they have to let us know if they're going to be making any changes. And that, that's something that I started the conversation this week with Duke because our, our ten-year franchise is coming due, so we're about a year out from having to renew it. So I'll be bringing that to council in the next six months because we're going to need to renew it.
Why does that change with the franchise fee that they need to have granted access to, to work in our right of ways?
It doesn't, they're allowed to. What the franchise does is, is a mutual agreed upon document that, that they agree that we can limit certain things, that they can't just come in and do anything, that they have to permit, that they have to let us know.
So when you're ready to renew, do you just add additional language?
Yeah, and, and our, our franchise agreement is pretty good, but there is some, some things that we're probably going to add to that and just some other minor changes. There, there's nothing overly wrong at all with our, even though, even though it was done nine years ago, and I've, and I've been through a couple of franchise agreements since, since then, and it's a pretty good document as it says.
Were you, were you in her line here in two thousand twenty-one when you, when this, when it went to three percent? What was it before?
It was always three percent.
Always three percent?
Yes, we just had to renew it. And so what I did, same thing with that, I just restricted it a little bit more, made a little bit better communication between Duke, just forced a little bit better communication for, for that. So it'll be the same thing here, it's just, the, the, the one difference is this document allows, it actually allows myself and the mayor to raise and lower the rate, which will be taken out because that shouldn't, that shouldn't be allowed. There, and that's not uncommon, there's a couple of cities that do that, but I don't, currently, it says, which it won't happen, I mean, once I read, you know, once I dug into this last month, you know, I talked to the mayor, I was like, that's never going to happen because I just don't think that's appropriate. The new one will, will say that council has to vote on that because I don't, I think, I, I shouldn't be allowed to give ninety-day notice and raise taxes without council's approval, which probably would never happen, but still, I, I want to make sure it's clearly stated in that franchise agreement.
But if we wanted to start it sooner, we could vote on it until now, you could do it?
You could, but, but again, it would come from council. I, I just, especially with funding, that's, I mean, that's council's main job is budgeting and funding, so it would, I feel like it definitely has to come from council for any direction on that moving forward. So that'll be a change that I've already talked to Duke about, you know, I think my meeting was yesterday, Tuesday, Monday, similar this week, but they're, they've already sent me the initial documents to start the new franchise agreement.
Is it, are these pass-through funds today? Does Duke use them for?
Yes, it'll, it'll pass, it'll pass to the customer and then they collect it and give us a check every month, like they're doing right now.
What is the benefit or why would Duke agree to a, it seems like they're just planning to mail that and collect it, collect the dollars and pass them straight to us. So what, why would they agree to it, especially if we're going to restrict some of their access?
I'm not sure how, yeah, I mean, I think it's just a partnership. It, it's nothing that's extreme. I mean, it's just, most of it's something they do anyway.
I would imagine it's something through the state, right? Because they use our roads, drive our roads, so.
Yeah, I mean, they have limitations. Most of it's already limited, limited by Caris anyway, but.
This is for road repairs for damage that they may have caused, right? So it's kind of.
Yeah, it just clearly lays out what, what our expectations are.
And along with Andy, you kind of feedbacking on Andy's question, so that you said the franchise agreement is up for renewal in about a year?
Yes.
And then we're discussing increasing the franchise fee, can we do that ahead of the renewal?
Absolutely.
And that would go in ten probably?
Yes.
So that this will go to effect this year?
Right, so what, what I would do if we raised this, again, I could, I could email them today and raise it without council approval.
To a limit of five percent, is that what it reads?
Yes, well, it's, it, that's the, five percent is the max acceptable where you're not going to get a lawsuit. I mean, that's, that's been like acceptable throughout the country. Most people try to keep it around three, but some cities do go up to five. So that's just based kind of on case law. So that's kind of the, everybody knows in the country that you can kind of take up to five percent without being challenged on it and having to justify it more.
I got on the state's website and they've got all the agreements on there and all of Northern Kentucky. The only two that I did not see on there were Florence, Covington, and Newport.
Covington's at four point nine.
They're at four, so they're higher. But everybody else that would be similar to us, the average is three point zero eight. So there's, and that is only because Edgewood's one point nine and Bellevue's three point five. Everybody else is three.
Three, yeah. So three is, is generally the, the number that everybody across New York.
Let me, a little background, just so I think everybody hears where, I think Jeff was on the OS Council when this happened as well too. I want to give Adam Meyer a lot of credit for getting this started because when they, for those of you who are familiar with Adam Meyer, he was on council a while ago, Governor Bevin, and actually moved to Montana to work for that governor. Extremely intelligent individual and I regard that gentleman right there, but when they worked on the franchise agreement back in two thousand fifteen, he was kind enough to put a clause in there because he could see the writing on the wall that it was probably a more fair and equitable way to handle our street assessments. So I just showed Bevin that he gives us ninety days to do it. This is, to me, this is one of the few times, there's no perfect answer for all this stuff, but this is one of the few times that we are able to do something and raise something actually and decrease everyone's overall cost on their street assessment. Because, you know, the rentals, we have so many state routes, twenty-seven, there are a road more than Parkway, Grand Avenue to make North Fort Thomas, South Fort Thomas Horseville, don't contribute to our overall street assessment fund. So this is a way for, you know, I think we have about sixteen houses in, in Fort Thomas, thirty percent of rentals that actually help limit the cost. It's pretty simple math, you know, hundred contributing to road is one thing, two hundred drops every street down. Plus, I think Matt made a really good point last time you were here, which I didn't even take into consideration. I've been trying for this for a few years, it's hard to understand all this stuff, and Matt made a, that made a good, pretty good day, the amount of time and energy and stress it takes off the administration. Because we have to bill people, we have to do road frontage, be able to, you know, we'll still make everybody, obviously, while wherever the street's being done, we'll still have the, the meetings, make sure that we're getting individuals' needs for their streets, but this overall not only lessens people's individual cost, they won't get directly hit with the bill, they're still, and, and it lessens our administrative fees and costs because it lessens our time and energy we have to put in this. I mean, there is nothing that would, it's not very often that this kind of thing can happen. We just held on to something for a little too long because we thought it might be the right way, and it seems like there's a more fair and equitable way of doing this.
And, and staff always deals with those handful of kind of where it's really unfair, you know, the people that live on the corner that are paying double. It, it's challenging, but we're, we're kind of limited on what, you know, we can't, we can't change between people, even though we, we see that someone getting a thirty-five-hundred-dollar bill compared to somebody getting a six-hundred-dollar bill just because of, it's challenging.
I was just, I was saying that last time, one of my credits was on, his address on Patricia Court, his driveway was on Jennifer Court, but he was from Newman. So he's got three streets, maybe parks, one car in Patricia Court every once in a while when his kids are gone, he'll never park there, and his bill was about thirty-five-hundred dollars, you know? I think moving forward, this is great, you know, I'm one of those guys that unfortunately did a lot of fireworks three years ago when it got built. I moved right after it got, I lived there for fifteen years and it was arguably one of the worst roads, but we had to wait because they were obviously going, work on that road, had to wait to complete that. But moving forward, I think everybody in town should be very pleased on lessening the load overall, so.
So looking at, you know, I think it seems like everybody would be in agreement of moving forward with this. So looking down to what the actual percentage would be, would be the next thing to discuss. So looking at the, the two thousand twenty-four resurfacing estimate of cost, even if the contractor does all the work, is five hundred thousand dollars. So we can get that entire map so nobody would be assessed. You could even do at three percent, you could probably pick up more work.
Right.
The following year, you wouldn't want to jump into this year.
And let me, if you don't mind, before you go on, let me explain a little bit too. Moving forward, like, like I said, this year we're, we're planning on contracting more. We just got our street assessment of the entire city that we had, where now we have a rating for every street. As typical with most cities, we're not ahead, so don't, don't think that we're spending too much on streets, meaning that, you know, at some point like in year twenty, we don't need to do as many streets, that's the opposite, right? We're, we're behind, just, and that's pretty typical of all streets, which means moving forward, we, it'd be great to be able to pick up a little bit more work, right? That'll add another street in to try, because what you want to do is look at a twenty-five, thirty-year picture and to see where our budget is, because we don't want huge years and then come down low, right? We try to even that out, which is what we're doing in this new assessment that we received for the street values and what their conditions are, is really helping us do a twenty-five-year look. So part of that is we do need to increase, if possible, the amount of streets we do. And additionally, the, again, the city's done a really good job of saving money over the years where they patch curbs, right, instead of replacing them. But we have a lot of curbs that are probably fifty-plus years old, you know, and some of them have, you know, half an inch to it, and we just kind of deal with that because it is, it's, it's cheaper to do it that way, but at some point, they're going to have to replace. So by, by increasing this enough, it's going to allow us, one, to add more streets to try to catch up a little bit more. And we're not in a bad situation by any means, but because it's, again, this is really a typical situation we're in, but I would like to try to catch up a little bit. And additionally, I would like to replace a lot more curbs that needed, right? So if you have a fifty-plus-year-old curb, it's time to replace the whole street. And that way, you can get maybe two or three overlays before you do it again, but my fear is we, we patched so many that at some point, we're going to hit that bubble and they're going to be deteriorating so much that we, we might get, instead of having a nice twenty years of pretty level expenses, that we're going to have some really high ones. So the more we can do, the even that out, the better. So when we're thinking about this, just understand that it's not, it's not just what we're doing right now, if we could really think about what should we be doing and what kind of impact will it have on the street program moving forward, because we are going to be spending all that staff time and, and having the, you know, collections from, from citizens that are getting these bills, but, but also, right? But also, let's improve these streets even more than what we have been when we need to.
I agree. I've always, Kevin will, Kevin will attest, the last few years I've ridden along, some one of the things that I always point out is as we continue to layer these streets, the curbs and the times that we do the curbs at individual times have a different height variance to them, right? So one of the ideas is keep our city pretty, you know, uniform, so we can do more of that. And I'm sure there's a threshold of how many percentage of curbs need to be redone, we can redo the whole curves, it allows us time to do it. I love, I've been saying this for a long time, I absolutely love what you said about pulling some work off public works, I think they have been spread way too thin over the years, they're because, generally because they're good at what they do, you know what I mean? So we can utilize it for a lot of sidewalks and curb work, where they can actually be working on other things I think that have more value for their time. So I love that. And one thing I noticed last time, I think you spoke, well, I think we have a lot of more street rebuilds than people think, you know, our city's a hundred and fifty years old, we're really hilly, and one thing that I didn't realize last time that is a problem, I showed up with a pendant, is when we were on Miami, there's a water that comes up from the bottom, you know, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, obviously, it's not hydrostratic pressure, water finds a path of least resistance, right? It's always tunneling and moving, right? So it's coming, it'll come up under the roads at different spots, right? So this allows us to address that early on so it doesn't cause more permanent damage because when the water comes up, freezes, expands, damages the road. So as we're on a hill and more construction happens, things get rebuilt, you know, additions happen, that opens up passage ways for water to find a way to the ground and come up at different spots. So all those things that you said, just wanted to emphasize a little bit as to why, and I think it's, I love thinking ahead, looking ahead, to make sure we continue to. And, and, and no matter what happens, it's going to be less of a cost to overall citizens than they're not going to see a bill, period.
What, what's our average spend? I know Andy said two thousand twenty-four, we're right on five hundred, but what is our average spend over the last ten roughly, without the, without the rebuild? I know that those throw up.
Well, you can, you can exclude the rebuilds. I mean, if you look at the next five years, it's, we're pretty heavy. I mean, next year's going to be a big year because we've got three.
We have a less share for next year.
Well, I wanted to, I wanted to exclude the rebuilds because I wanted to talk about those separately. So do we know on average what, what the spend is?
Next year's a million, isn't it?
Right, and, and we can look back, but we, we also had COVID years into that, so it's, it's really difficult to do for that aspect, but we, we do need to do a lot more full-depth repairs, or not only full-depth repairs, but full-depth replacements moving forward, and, and this will give us a lot of opportunity to do that without, without it being, you know, more challenging.
But then realizing use these funds for example would be the Rossford Bridge? Is that something that would come out of these funds?
No, I mean, whatever council says, but how, how, we're going to word it as these funds go to KDOT, which is our street repaving program, and that's where they're going to stay. So for, for some year, or for a year, maybe we don't use all of it and we'll roll over to the next year, because again, we need to plan. Like next year's a big, it's a big year, it's like a million dollars, but we'll probably be closer to five hundred, you know, maybe six hundred moving forward is what we're probably going to, is what I'm trying to get to an average of about five hundred to six hundred thousand a year.
So we could build our program around what we're collecting once we get past this million dollar year? But that's kind of what I was.
Yeah, I mean, it could be, it could be used that, but it's mostly going to be overlays, rebuilds of the actual streets. The Culver Bridge is a little different, you know, I'm still trying to even get state funding for that because there's a lot of cities that are tasked with these bridges that we really weren't, maybe not paying attention to or, or kind of given to us over the years, we've never really thought about them, but now they're all starting to come due, and that's a big burden on cities, which is why, you know, I've talked to legislators about it, to try to get some state funding, which is a possibility for that culver, the replacement they are culver on already.
Matt, you told me yesterday, what's the city's recommendation for the percent that's increased?
I mean, one more thing before, again, that, Adam, you had talked about curbs and about making the street look better, but I also want everybody to understand that the curbs serve a really good purpose of keeping the water off the properties too, and obviously a lot of houses in Fort Thomas have leaks, but, so replacing the curbs and making sure they're in good condition is, is a big benefit in addition to, it does make this, everybody look nicer and the streets look nicer.
I'm not talking about down, they just, they get smaller as time goes on. They say they replace with the same fill, but they're always different, plus then they also sometimes block some of the water that comes to the street, so that will be, are like on the elevate them to make sure that they're doing exactly what they're supposed to do, not going by a minimum standard.
Right, I just, I just want to bring that up, it's very important.
That's what I meant.
Keep the water on the roads into the drains so they're not getting on the people's properties, but, you know, from what we talked about the last council meeting, or committee meeting, I think one and a half percent, that'll bring about three fifty a year in. I think that's, that'll set us up really well moving forward to be able to do a little bit more than what we're doing now, and so that's, that would be our.
It's important to understand, I think, so if we take, do the one and a half and we call it three hundred and fifty thousand even, and there will be years where we require more money, there will be years when we don't use all that money, but let's say we have a rollover, you mentioned that the money stays in that pot and it's a rollover, but it's important to understand, I think, and you explained yesterday, so maybe speak up a little bit, as costs increase, which inevitably they're going to continue to increase, we need to make sure we factor that into, and you're comfortable that that number would do that?
Yes, so my goal would not be changing this every year, right? I mean, let's, we may take a look at it, it's a ten-year franchise, so this next franchise would have it in the full ordinance of the franchise, the, whatever the current rate is. My goal would, and my recommendation would be, we can take a look at it every five years, just see how we're doing. If we would want to change it, maybe do it every five years, but I think as long as you have a good number now, we shouldn't have to change it, like, it, it should be, it should be pretty consistent.
So we currently get three hundred thousand road aid funds, is that from the state, correct?
The marketing?
Yeah.
Is that an average or is that fluctuate every year?
It, it, it doesn't fluctuate all that much. I think our, I, I think we're between three hundred and three and a quarter in, in any given year, so three's a good average.
Even though we have five hundred thousand dollars in roads this year roughly, I didn't bring that sheet with me, we still have a million dollars in, in public works funding that they needed as far as like design and engineering midway, this was quite a big chunk, then some curb, a few curbs and stuff like that. So is that going to be a consistent number every year?
A million?
Yeah, so this year we had the breakdown, I wish I would have brought my sheet.
Oh, okay, you're talking about this just.
Additional, additional cost, which we normally don't typically always see, but it was great to see those this year, I love breaking it all down because.
That shouldn't be an annual cost because we're, right now, we're playing catch-up because of all the years of, of focusing on, you know, street programming things, some of that has been left off. So no, once we get to that, again, once we catch up, we should be able to maintain that well, which is the same thing with this program, I'm hoping to be able to catch up and eventually we'll be able to maintain that, so now that would be.
Going into, so we could set it up to where out of the KDOT budget, we could put electric poles underground, or did you, or was that a different?
We, yeah, I mean, we can, we can put that in, absolutely. I mean, we can do anything you guys want, I'm just telling you what my vision was is if we're going to do this, the estimates that I've been coming up with, the one and a half percent was to be able to fund the street program itself.
The one and a half percent was just to do away with, which makes sense because if the Cincinnati Bell Duke revenue estimates a hundred, special assessments are probably average one fifty to two hundred, depending on.
What was the first number you just said? I'm sorry.
Hundred from.
The current franchise is about fifty.
It's fifty.
Why does it say a hundred on the two thousand twenty-four?
There's fifty from, there's fifty that, that used to be a Cincinnati Bell franchise, it's really the state's telecom, telecommunications tax.
But we still get that?
We allocate, we allocate half of that number, so your total between the two is about a hundred.
Is that not a fluctuate?
And that's, that one does not fluctuate. It could, the reason we get that is if we didn't have that franchise, the state would get that money.
Right.
So it's a deferment. So that's the only reason, we didn't raise that, so the citizens aren't paying any more for that. It, it's one of those things that, hey, cities, if you don't do this, the state gets that fifty thousand, so that's why that franchise is there. So it's a little different than the Duke franchise. That could be raised, but.
So the one and a half percent as an example makes up for, and then goes a little bit farther than what?
I would say it goes about a hundred and fifty thousand more a year than, than what we've been doing as consistency.
And, and that, that does away with the assessments that, that.
Correct. That's, that gives, that gives us very, being comfortable getting rid of those assessments and gives us a little bit, it's not like it's, it'll be a huge difference for the street program yet, but I, but I think over time, we can, we can do a lot more with it.
I, I would definitely like, I think Andy's mentioned this before, and I think a lot of people love how the telephone wires are buried down this part of town. If, when that engineering cost for the building comes in and burying that, if we reevaluate this to make sure we're prepared for that in the future, you know what I mean? If that makes sense, like that's a, it's maybe a good cost for a good return because it's, people do love that, so.
Yeah, the, the, you set, just the analysis on as two hundred thousand and then the projects looking at it.
Yeah, right.
Five, just in that area.
So just by way of the math, when you said a hundred and fifty thousand increase, so you're, one, you're talking about a one and a half percent, so three fifty, you got to back up to fifty that we already collect, right? And then you got to back up to one fifty that's already assessed, it's two hundred minus the one fifty, that's what you're saying? And one and a half percent would be about one fifty increase?
Right.
So it would be a hundred and fifty thousand dollar increase?
It's about a hundred and fifty thousand a year increase.
You've got to net out three fifty total at one and a half percent, but then you've got to net out two hundred dollars.
So do you think we should do more of them then?
You know, I, any more I'll use, because we'll, we'll do more curbs and things like that, right?
It still saves everybody money, it's not like just, you know, we're saying we're still less than every other city.
And that one and a half percent, you know, my, my house bill will go up forty, forty-five dollars a year, just so kind of for my, my utility, at least for my last year, my last month bill, just to kind of give everybody a frame of what that means.
I'd be in favor of doing something lower and because we're not locked in, if it, if it's not enough, we can even increase it, say, in three years from now.
We could, we could. I don't, I don't want to get into the habit where we're.
Right, I understand, but something incremental, we think it's reasonable versus just going higher.
Right, and, and once we kind of make some changes to the program in three years, maybe, you know, we like what we're seeing and, and costs are going up and then we can do that, so absolutely.
Let me ask you about that, this, this five-year program that we had last time, you mentioned that we could do more with something like this. So twenty-four, twenty-five, you know, between three and five streets, it says it goes to seven streets, but we're talking probably simply even more than that if we were to increase the number of streets, right?
Probably, right.
So it might be like nine and ten?
It's possible. The problem is you really can't, you can't go off so much as the number of streets is because you have the length of streets, how wide.
How much work is involved?
But, but this is the other benefit that not having a street assessment that locks the city of Fort Thomas in compared to other cities is what I would always do is I would always budget, these are my street program for this year, but I would always have a couple of smaller ones, smaller projects, kind of in, kind of have construction drawings on those as a possibility. So when I would bid out those five streets that I planned, if it came in underbid, I would throw another one of those streets in. So just about every year in my last city, I would throw an extra street in, it would be a smaller one, but I would get that knocked out, right? So we don't have to focus on that. Well, we can't do that in Fort Thomas because then I'd have to start the whole process of assessments and, and kind of do that another process, which is, we wouldn't have enough time to do it. So allowing, getting rid of the street assessment allows us to take quick changes. Even if a street comes in too high this year, we could say, you know what, because of whatever, you know, maybe the, the construction companies have too much this year, and, and Frank tells us, hey, if we push that to next year, it'll probably be cheaper, let's change and do these two streets instead of that big one, right? That gives us a lot of flexibility not having a street assessment in Fort Thomas that, that allows the staff to really make on, you know, changes. I mean, I can add a street within thirty days compared to, I couldn't do that, I had to wait a whole year if there's extra money left over.
What I'm getting at there is, back to my comment about let's do something that's reasonable initially, and one and a half percent is one, a one fifty increase, but is that one fifty increase reasonable based on where this goes from where it is now? So how many more streets do we add or what's the revision of cost? So I mean, you know what I'm saying?
That's keeping, that's going as, I, I think I know what you mean.
It's going to get larger than this.
Yes, yes.
So is one fifty.
If we wanted to curbs, wouldn't we have to jump a little bit more than?
We, we probably do, um, I mean, I'm trying to be conservative on, on everything.
I would think that we're, even at, if it were two.
So two gives you another hundred thousand.
You know, that was, at two, we would still be the lowest person in Northern Kentucky. Yeah, I think if, if there's.
And everyone's still paying less.
And everybody's still paying less and there's no assessments, so nobody gets a four thousand dollar hit when their street gets done. You know, so it's spaced out, it's like capital budgeting. It, I would think that you could also, the higher it goes, you could put electric poles underground. And I think there isn't a single person that doesn't think that's a, gives, makes the city prettier and nicer than anything, really. You just, it's hard not to notice when they're not there unless you really pay attention. But driving down the middle here, it's, if you really compare it to when you're driving along a street with electric poles and wires hanging everywhere, it is a huge difference.
I was, I think it was the biggest, I, way before my time on council, and I think it was the biggest compliments I've ever heard about the cities.
Yeah, I think it's the best thing.
I still recall that.
And, I mean, the other thing is in the midway district that we're talking about right now, is not having been knocked down by trucks, especially the military trucks, which we had twice in the last year, um, just cars hitting them, it's more, it's more reliable as well.
We're also done a lot, we're also doing a lot of work up there with the sports complex and then the, uh, the tower park, and anything we've done in the last fifteen years up there, um, and those businesses have built themselves. And everybody in town deserves something. I believe the money we should be spending should be better in those areas to drive more people there to enhance the, the nature of those districts. And those are businesses, there's a lot of restaurants and stuff like that that all the way it's valued to the what they've already invested in.
Does Duke ever contribute anything towards putting electric underground? Just because of their savings of maintenance?
I, I don't think that they contribute, uh, but there is, there are ways where they can, like, with the process, they'll help out and definitely make it cheaper than if we didn't use them type of thing. I mean, they, they have participated in, in doing stuff, subcontracting. But I wouldn't say they contribute that I'm used to. Other than grants, I mean, they, you know, they do grants to the city throughout the year on other stuff. But, but I don't know if they're ever kind of contributing, but, but I, I talked to Duke about that this week as well, about the midway and how it's going to be something we're looking at.
And one thing we could, and one thing we could add to the franchise fee is a limited amount of time when they have to take down telephone poles to take the other ones out.
It's not, well, but it's not Duke.
It's not Duke.
No, it's Cincinnati Bell, Ultra Fiver, those, and the head comes in with them, I, I have, nobody can figure out how to motivate those.
Because I think up and down, if anyone exists there.
Duke is very quick at doing that. So you'll see all the higher lines are moved, the lower lines are not. The lower lines are the Cincinnati Bell, the internet, and they take whatever to remove them. They're, they're the problem, not Duke. I mean, it's the same thing in Tower Park right now. Duke finished their work weeks ago, where they moved the poles and stuff. All, all the other poles are still up, we can't touch them until Ultra Fiver gets out there and, and changes it. And it's getting really dangerously close to me going out with some snips and making, making them jump out the right way. It, it's, it's ridiculous. And that's why, I mean, there's a small pole in front of St. Thomas right now. And the reason it's up is Cincinnati Bell won't take their.
And it's not like they won't get motion to, because this is something they decided overnight.
The problem is that it's Duke's pole, so they can't remove it unless it's empty. So it seems like it's Duke's problem, but it's Cincinnati Bell's been sitting there on that pole for years and they haven't moved it. And there's, there's very little, I mean, I, I just sent out an email a month ago asking all the city administration in Kentucky, has anybody helped figure out how to, like, can, can we, can we sue them, can we, can we find them? I mean, that, and there's just somehow they, they're holding it.
Yep. So to, to talk about real quick, the, uh, repealing of the street assessment program. So, uh, the people that are in two thousand twenty-four on Covert Run, Gunpowder, Memory Lane, Pleasant Ridge, and Winston Hill Road, they're going to have an assessment when they know that four months later, nobody else will?
Yes, sir. I mean, it, it's, it's the same thing.
There's always collateral.
It's the same thing that happened when, when my street got paid, you know, and I talked to Ron, I was different city administrator, I talked to Ron, I'm like, when are we going to change this? He's like, well, the last people. I'm like, then do it next year. I said, I'll come to council meeting and say, look, I just paid, I get it, that this is a long-term positive for everybody, right? So you're right, it's, and that's, but that, that is always going to be there for the next hundred years. It, it, it's going to, somebody's going to be the last ones to pay.
I remember, I remember when you came up, because you were back behind the schools and I even reached out to you before I, I didn't know anymore. I was like, we should at least be doing sixty, forty back there because of the amount of traffic that goes in the schools.
Yeah, and, and so that's a, that's a complaint we're going to get, and I get it. But at some point, we're going to have to rip the band-aid off and, and.
And in the long run, this is going to cost all the less, including them. And I was with these guys that just got hit two years ago, two years ago, it was a thousand dollar bill. You know, so I'm, I'm one of those casualties right there, and I just unfortunately.
You know, but I paid fourteen hundred, what, four, five years ago.
I did, and it happened to me on, uh, where I had a whole corner.
Right.
You know, and it, and I, I actually got the bill after I moved.
Those are the ones that are going to make, it's going to be much cheaper long-term, especially.
They have three streets.
You are one of them.
That's true.
You are one of them.
So we have two, yes, but two.
Yeah, sure.
Typically, we do bundles, so when people have those streets, it's not, we're trying to fit all those in the same area, so they, it's not like they get it separated, they get it all at one time because we're trying to.
Yeah, it saves money because they're all there anyway, so we have, it's unfortunate, but.
So to Andy's point about potentially using, if we had enough money to use, uh, your office streets into the power lines and stuff. So these funds would go into a separate, let's say a counter, maybe a separate line, right? Separated, then who, do we determine then what can be, what it can be used for? We're having that discussion, hey, do we use it for this? Who, who makes that help?
Yeah, so you're going to, you, council's the ones that approve budgets, so you can tell me where to dedicate what money to what.
But right now, it'll be dedicated to public works or something like that.
It'll be our K dot fund.
Okay.
Um, and the ordinance is going to say K dot fund or if we change that name, right, in the future, so it's, but it's to the street program.
Yeah, I get that, I just want to make sure that what would be a slush fund or?
Yeah, I don't want to go back to the general fund.
It will not go back to the general fund. Yeah, no, that, that'll, it'll, it'll go, the revenue should go directly there. Because typically right now, what happens is we, we take general fund and put it into the K dot. So the goal would be that we don't necessarily have to do that, at least to that level, or maybe at all, if we can do this right moving forward, right? Between the Mark money and, and the Duke, it'd be nice to have that fund substitution like it should be. The minus is big years maybe, that we're doing larger projects.
I'd be open to, uh, having two percent at the bottom of what we're talking about, where you could go all the way up to three. Because that amount of money, you would actually be, if you're adding a little bit of money, if we're adding a little bit of money, you might see some, you know, another street here and there, but it's not that, I mean, it's not much of a difference at all. We're, we'd still be under, if we went to two and a half, we'd still be the cheapest.
Do you remember Ed, Ed Wood is what, two and a half, right?
Two, two point nine.
Yeah, but you imagine the Turkey Foot alone, Thomas more Parkway and stuff like that.
It's with St. Elizabethville alone.
Yeah, and then, and all the complexes down there are the reason that that number's lower than the rest of it. And Millilil's is five percent, you know what I mean? And, and those are large homes.
It would actually allow us to really move forward on stuff.
We could add a street.
I'm sorry, sorry about what other people were doing, I'm just thinking of it. And that one fifty increase isn't a lot of money per year, based on what we need to do and catch up and that sort of thing. I agree.
Both, both ways are great ways to look at it, you know what I mean? We're, we're still less than the neighboring partners and we're getting more done.
But personally, I'd probably want to do one to break out, because we're not locked in.
And in five years, if you think we're not using it properly, we'll lower it, or two, I mean, next year. But I mean, give, I would give it a few years to watch, watch the program, right? To see some substantial changes, not just based on one year, but at five-year mark, let's take a look at it and see one of two ways. Say, hey, you're not using it properly, we're going to reduce it, or you could do even more, maybe we up it a half, right?
Could we build in the ordinance that it needs to be reviewed every so many years? Just to, just to rethudge on, so it doesn't get lost again?
Depending on you want to.
Yeah.
Like the concrete of the plant?
The only, the only thing I would say, like, just, my, my two cents, I think this is a really solid conversation and, and I'm, I'm in favor of where we're going with this. I think you're right, uh, Eric, we can't really, it's hard to compare to Edgewood especially, because, you know, there's just a ton of different variables that they face that we, we don't have here. I'm still sensitive to the fact, I understand that in the long run, it's going to save everybody in town money. It's hard to quantify that, I'd imagine, because everybody's paying a different amount on their street assessment based on their home and where, where it's situated. So I am sensitive to the fact that this is still an additional fee, it's going to be charged to every resident. I understand it's lower than all of our neighboring cities, which is wonderful. If we want to go to two percent, I wouldn't want to go any higher than that. I would probably favor one and a half, just based on what, what Matt said, and see the trajectory of how that, how those funds are used and how they build over three or five years, see where we are. Um, I'm open to having the conversation about two percent, but I, I don't think I'd want to go above that. I think if we can, you know, we don't want to get fat and happy, obviously, and we'd all agree on that. We want to, we want to be this responsible and budget as best we can, kind of just from what I've heard from the city. If we can do it at one and a half, let's do it at one and a half, that's going to allow us additional streets every year. And then let's look in three years and see, and let's look in five years and see, and maybe we've established, you know, another half million dollars that we didn't anticipate. And at that point, well, we don't need to raise it, we can just.
We probably won't have another half million dollars if we're doing, the additional streets are going to use the money, the additional hundred or so we're going to get at a, having a one and a half percent fee. If, if we want to actually, and I look at one and a half as status quo, maybe add a street here, that's what we're looking at.
Or at least adding curves. I mean, I, I think one and a half would, would probably would be adding streets as much, but we, we should be able to add a lot more curve than.
So really, uh, like I look at it as a one and a half percent, would we, you could take burying electric poles off the board, because that's not what, it's not going to be anywhere close. So the, the dear, the deal is, if you want to stay the same, add a little bit, you go one and a half percent. If you actually want to be able to get ahead of where, and actually where we want to be based on the street assessment, we'd have to go a little bit higher, especially if we want to put electric underground. It, so that's the decision. You want to keep it the same, add a little bit, or actually put electric poles underground and get ahead of it.
With an additional hundred thousand a year, how long is it going to take us to build up that money to bury the poles?
It will never fully fund it.
Couple hundred.
They would never fully fund it, but it would take it, it would take a century.
Two centuries.
So, so, and, and that's, that's to Ben's point, I mean, if we're going to, if we're going to be adjusting, I, I would like to adjust on the side of conserv, being more conservative and, and paying more tax, unless we have a dedicated reason to collect that money besides just doing a couple extra streets. Because at one and a half, we can do a couple extra streets. At two, if we want to, if we want to use that money to bury the poles, it's not going to be enough.
I, I think, I'm.
We're not going to do extra, definitely not two extra streets at one half, I mean, we're.
I, I kind of lean towards Andy where we can, we can prepare and we can do more streets and beautify the city a little bit more. Whether it goes electric poles or not, it's very little, um, it's a very little cost for a lot of return uh, for what the city can do to continue to grow our city in that, in that direction, personally.
I, I would like to, I'm, I'm, I'm okay with the one and a half and two, but if we do two, I'd like to have a plan for the extra half a percent. Like, what, specifically what we would be using that for? And if we're going to, if we're going to take those extra funds and put it towards burying the, the wires, that's okay. If we're going to, if we're going to use it.
I would not, I mean, I wouldn't even tap into that. I mean, it would be, it would be curve, more curve replacements and possibly adding streets over a five-year period. I mean, I mean, are you asking, you want me to tell you what streets we'll use?
No, 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 just dedicated for.
It'll be dedicated for street, I mean, that's what, unless you guys tell me otherwise, that's my opinion.
One of the benefits.
What we're talking about is to Andy's point on the two percent, we're talking about using that, those funds to bury the wires, but now we're saying we're not going to use the funds to bury the wires, so it, which is okay. Uh, as long, if we go with the two percent, I just want to make sure we're, we're, the money's going to be used wisely. And if it's not going to be used for the wires, then we need to make sure that it goes into streets, and that's what it's for.
Not, not forgivable loans, more grains. No, I, I mean, I, my, my intention is for even two percent would be a hundred percent streets. The difference would be increasing the sidewalk replacements as opposed to patching and curves replacements as opposed to patching. And then when possible, if we could add an extra street in moving forward. I mean, that's, that's what my, unless you guys, unless you guys tell me otherwise, that would be operationally what I was going to do.
That would be a good example of designating the funds, which, which is what I'm talking, which I'm, I'm completely comfortable with that.
And that's something every year that I can show you, hey, this is, you know, this is the revenue, this is the expenses that we use, this is the leftover. You know, it'll show that. And again, I'd ask that you, you take at least three to five years to take a good picture of it, because the first year might be different, right? Um, so.
I think one of the benefits of doing more streets, more sidewalks, more curbs, and this is something that, uh, your predecessor, Ron Dill, always said, is when people's streets get done, their landscaping, uh, they, they, they look outside, they, they take more care of their grass, they put bushes in. It just adds a more of a value than just the street itself, people start taking pride back into something. Because when something gets run down, it gets harder and harder to maintain. So I think as, for the public and for the way our city looks, just adding those streets adds more value than just the streets, the size of the curves as well. And I think when Andy's talking about burying like a cold poles, because I think that's one of the things that's top of him, I think it goes within just making the city better in general. So I think overall, uh, whether we're working towards making, burying the poles, burying the electric, which I would like to see, which we will with the, with those engineering costs, that overall, the city's going to look better because of this program. It still saves the citizens' money and save our, not just the citizens' money, but save the administration money in time and energy. And we're getting way ahead of the game, which we've been behind for a long time. And it is what has cost our public works time and money and energy, which they can focus now on other things. We can forgive them the freedom to clean up other areas of time. I think it's, I'm just so glad that this program's coming back around to reassess.
Yeah, I, I would say the decision we're making is at, at one point five percent, we're, we're doing a little bit more. Two percent, we'd actually be picking up a street and cur, there are curves, you know, where you're, you're actually doing it. Over two percent, two and a half to three, you could actually be burying wonderful. And the, you know, down the road, because you would be accumulating that amount of money. So that's, I think that's the decision, you want to keep it at the same as, I would say, one and a half percent, you could do a little bit more. You could really make a move on making the streets nicer at two percent. If you want to go over two and a half to three percent, then you can actually down the, you know, within the years, be buried in poles.
I think two percent's a nice start, and I'd say, once we get the assessment from the midway district on what it's actually going to cost for that area, that we can broaden that for the rest of the area and we can reevaluate it then too.
I'm not opposed to two, but if we do that, um, yeah, I'd like to look at it, like, I, I'm not getting into the, what's the just every year and I like and stuff, but I would like to look, because it's a change, I'd like to look at it in three years. And, and say, you know, what have we done with it, and where are we, and how is this working, and make a decision. And then maybe it goes to five, unless we can't be a field for once more. I would, I would say, I'd go two if we could take another dive into it three years.
I think that's.
I think that's great. And then, I mean, my intent would be every year to show what we're, what we're doing, obviously, but again, I think a three-year gives.
It should be a surprise in three years.
Right, a three-year would be a really nice decision to show the difference.
As far as the timeline on getting a, uh, a recommendation from this committee, uh, what are you looking at as far as how long this process will take you?
So a recommendation is committee, well, it depends on legislation on for next Tuesday council meeting. And then, um, if council approves that, then I will notify Duke, and it would be ninety days. Within, within ninety days, they have to make the change.
We have to run it twice?
No. So, doing research on street assessment, there is nothing in our ordinance that says we do street assessment. Every year we do that new ordinance, um, to, to do that, right? So what I would, what I would ask for next Tuesday would be a municipal order saying that council wants to not do street assessments for fiscal year twenty-five, which is the year coming up. Um, that council wants to raise the, the franchise fee to this percent, and that that money will be dedicated for street assessments in the K dot fund. So that would be a municipal order that I would, that would ask council to approve. Unless they approve that, that'll give me authority to go ahead and notify Duke, say, we want this change in, in franchise fee. And then that will be turned on by the time one July comes around, when the new street program is officially approved.
And we would have the annual ordinances for?
We don't have to, we don't have to have public hearings, what we would do is, we would talk about the street program and let citizens come in and talk.
Yeah, instead of a public hearing.
Still less.
It wouldn't be a public hearing, but it would be a meeting, yes.
An opportunity to correct the speed.
Yeah, because we get a lot from that, I mean, we, we find out drainage that we might not realize. We, we find out a lot of good information from that, so that wouldn't, we wouldn't want that to stop.
Yeah.
It just wouldn't have to be as formal as it used to be. So, I mean, because of my last year, what we would do sometimes is just, we'd meet out on the street and say, hey, between five and six today, we're going to be out here. We're, we're doing your street next year, come up and talk to us, and we can actually see that.
That actually might be better too, versus having some.
I mean, it's a little more taxing because.
For us, right?
Because we have to go to that many different streets, but it is easier because, you know, Kevin can walk down and take a look at what they're saying as opposed to.
We do have a really, right now, we have a really nice setup on the way they're engaged, you know what I mean? The way they come to council, I think, but for the most part, it's, uh, it's understanding. And I think Kevin does a fantastic job of addressing issues under there, even when we go down and meet. The way they come to council, I think, but for the most part, it's, uh, it's understanding, and I think Kevin does a fantastic job of addressing issues under there, even when we go down and meet with them, he's fantastic on explaining the situation. And, and thanks again for the budget you created, again, once again, the, the public works, we had a better breakdown from the new system we're having with Joe, it allows us to talk a little bit more.
That was Kevin's.
And so, yeah. That was great, I mean, it's all stemming from you putting things in pockets, make sure we know where we're going, so in the future, we have to then why, why we're doing things that would be huge. We need to feel this way.
So, do I need to make a, make a motion? Well, I'll make a motion to raise the Duke franchise fee to two percent.
One second, though.
All in favor?
I'm sorry.
All right.
You, you're in charge, you say all in favor?
I didn't know if it was a roll call vote or not, dude.
It's, it's a committee, it's, it really just gives me direction.
Yeah, I figured as much, right? They don't really mean as much, it's just that you know that everybody's on the same page. But, my apologies, sir.
That's fine, any names?
Okay. With that, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
So just real quick for your adjourn, just so you know what I'm gonna do, I'm gonna make a municipal order, um, that'll, that'll state that council wants to increase Duke franchise to two percent, that the funding.
Gas and electric.
Gas and electric.
Now it's just gas.
That was both. I just said seventy one percent, they're broken down, I think thirty-five cents is gas and then balance is gas. It's, whatever, so, no, it'll be, it'll be both. Um, so I'll have a, the, the council wants to increase the franchise fee to two percent, that the funding is dedicated to K dot for, uh, the street program, and then the rest of that will be added.
And polish is the assessment appropriate?
Yes, and, and we will no longer be doing the street assessment as long, that's what it was, as, as long as the franchise agreement is at its current rate, we will not do street assessments moving forward.
And, and a three-year review.
I'm gonna add that into the ordinance, but I can, that's my, I can do, so all this is gonna be added to the ordinance, which will be better here in six months, when we do the new franchise agreement. I'll make sure it's on there as well.
Thank you.
Yeah, inform me, John, I, I know we've already voted, but this is a positive change, it's not an insignificant change. I would just like to hear your opinion, Kevin, or just, you know, the direction that council's recommending, how do you feel about it?
No, I like the idea, I think one of the things that we touched on, but really didn't, one of the things we touched on, but really didn't stress was the, the evaluation that was done by C T. They really can't tell the nature of the substructure of the older streets. And I think there's gonna be a lot more rebuilds as we move on, these streets are old, and we, generally, there's a life, lifespan of that physical street. And then the overlay, then, then at some point, take off the overlay and re-overlay it, but at some point, these streets are gonna start breaking down. And unfortunately, without doing borings on every street, uh, which wasn't a part of the evaluation, we know that these streets are getting older and these, the streets, there's gonna be a lot more rebuilds. Um, so I think in addition to the curbs and, and, you know, potentially pulling our public works off of some of these programs, um, whether it's permanent or periodically, I think the street rebuilds, this is gonna make up for the street rebuilds that we're going to have. It's just at this point, we don't know how many and how quickly, without literally boring every street. So I think it's a, I, I think it's a really good move, and I think that we're going to need it for not only what was mentioned, but more primarily for me, the rebuilds.
Yeah, I remember that last time we talked about the works, they said, uh, there's gonna be more rebuilds coming up, and we do, duct tape quite a few things sometimes to get by. Yeah, it's a lot easier probably to do rebuilds, right? When you're not asking somebody for assessing as well, so even though it doesn't go into the cost as much, but it costs the city a lot more money, so.
Second.
Let's go to your.
Thank you.
Nice job.